Good morning. Welcome back to the Planning Commission for the regularly scheduled meeting of July 24th. And we will call the meeting to order right now and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any staff announcements or agenda changes today?
No agenda changes, but I do have one staff announcement for, we will be seeing, or we have slated on the schedule to be posted for the August 14th Planning Commission meeting, project number 2025-009, which is a variance for a garage structure. And so you'll be seeing a variance to shorten up the setbacks and a front yard setback for a garage structure, and that'll be August 14th. So, thank you.
Is this the one that we needed to reschedule?
It is.
Okay, thank you. So, there's nobody here, is there anybody online? Okay, well, we will open and close the public comment portion of the meeting unless one of you would like to make a public comment not related to the item on the agenda today. Nope, okay. And we have closed the public comment period, and we have no consent agenda items today. So we can get started with the regular agenda item one, 2023-008 Tentative Subdivision Track Map and Modifications to Existing Permit 2004-015 for Copper Valley Town Square LLC. Go Madeline.
Good morning. Give me just a second to get this up here. Too many things. There we go. Good morning. Madeline Slandro, Senior Planner. So today I am presenting Tentative Subdivision Track Map 2023-008 to create 38 townhome lots within the Copperopolis Town Square. As you know from my memo that was sent to you last week, the applicant had also requested a concurrent modification to remove a mitigation measure requiring traffic signals. However, the applicant has withdrawn that request pending further discussions with Caltrans. So we are proceeding with the map only. So this proposed project is within the Copperopolis Town Square. The footprint of the Copper Mill project, which was the original project that created the town square, is outlined here in purple, and the two proposed townhome sites are shown here in red. And just for consistency and clarity, I'm going to refer to this as the Copper Mill project and not the town square. So these are the approximate boundaries of the two sites. And this is our county 2024 aerial imagery showing that both sites are undeveloped. I'm sorry, I didn't approximate the boundaries on here because we are waiting for GIS to update the boundary line adjustment that was recorded in 2023. So we don't have the corrected boundary lines for the two sites A and B with new APN numbers. So the proposal is to convert the current lots within the Copper Mill project footprint to townhomes, which will be sold as individual lots. Site A, which is on the west side of Sawmill Creek Road here, is proposed to have 22 townhomes, and Site B is proposed to have 16. Each site will have a common area, which includes access roads, guest parking, and utility easement. This is the photo of Site A, showing that it's been previously graded and undeveloped, and that is Site B. So I'm going to give a bit of background here. This is the site plan from the 2005 Environmental Impact Report for the Copper Mill project that shows the original vision for the town square. The Copper Mill project consisted of a general plan amendment, a zoning amendment, and a development agreement that was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2005, which would regulate the development within the town square through the creation of the Copper Mill Zoning Code. Everything within the footprint is zoned mixed use, which permits a variety of commercial, office, professional, and residential uses by right without future discretionary actions. Development within the footprint can't exceed 233,000 square feet, a floor area for commercial or residential structures, and that includes second and third stories, and cannot include more than 84 dwelling units. In 2007, there was a subsequent map that was approved, which created 13 building lots, six parking lots, five common area lots, and one street lot for the Copper Mill project. Since approval of this map, there has been mass grading occurring throughout the site. 11 buildings and associated parking areas have been constructed, and just over 84,000 square feet of development has been constructed, a quarter of which is developed with 15 dwelling units out of the allotted 233,084 dwelling units approved with the Copper Mill project. The subject parcels are all designated in the 2019 general plan as community center, which identifies a mix of residential and commercial uses intended to give the residents and visitors to the community and the surrounding area. And all parcels, as I said, are zoned mixed use through the Copper Mill Zoning Code, which is shown here in orange. So the application was circulated to various county departments, local, public, state, and federal agencies requesting comments. We received comments from the Copperopolis Fire Protection District requesting equipment such as hoses, intake relief valves, and an attack nozzle as part of the project approval. The Public Works Department's comments also included standard conditions for requirements for the final map, which are included in the resolution. They also requested a traffic analysis to analyze the applicant's request to remove the mitigation for the traffic signals, and I'll discuss more on that in a minute. Comments were also received from the county's environmental management agency, which requested a written statement from the water purveyor and sanitation district. The project is within the Calvers County Water District Service Area, which will require approval of a water services facility agreement for this project. And in addition, under the prior agreements for the Copper Mill project, the applicant has remaining commitments to construct necessary off-site improvements to serve this planning area with water and wastewater utilities. And Caltrans, they had initially submitted standard comments for work within the state right of way, as the original application was just for the map. However, after reviewing the updated application, which included the request for the modification, Caltrans responded on July 12th of 2025, requiring a traffic impact study with additional analysis. As you know from the previous staff report, the applicant hired an engineer to complete a signal warrant study to determine how State Route 4 might be impacted by the deletion of the mitigation measure requiring the traffic signals. However, Caltrans is requiring additional data to make their determination, so we will bring the modification back after they have resolved this issue. So an EIR, as I stated before, was certified when the board approved the Copper Mill project in 2005. And for this project, we analyzed whether the proposal would meet the conditions under CEQA warranting preparation of a subsequent or supplemental EIR, or whether an addendum to the EIR was appropriate. The proposed subdivision map is already within the Copper Mill project development footprint, as I showed you before, and will remain subject to the remaining mitigations for the Copper Mill project and won't result in any increase in the allowed number of residential units and other infrastructure that was approved through the Copper Mill project. So potential impacts associated with the proposed map here would either be equal to or less than those that were described in the 2005 EIR. So it was determined that the project would result in no new significant impacts that were not already analyzed in the EIR, nor cause a substantial increase in the severity of any previously identified significant impacts. So preparation of an addendum was deemed adequate and appropriate. The applicant wishes to withdraw the modification request to rescind mitigation measure TR-3B pending further discussions with Caltrans. That mitigation measure was for two traffic signals on Highway 4. So this map shall remain subject to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Despite the addendum covering a two-part project, so the addendum discusses both the map and the request for the modification, the approval is only for the map, and the applicant, as the applicant voluntarily withdrew their request for the modification. And so the addendum remains relevant for this remaining project. So to conclude, as the tentative subdivision track map is already within the Copper Mill project footprint, and the number of dwelling units is allowed under the Copper Mill Zoning Code, the proposed project is within the scope of the Copper Mill Project EIR pursuant to Section 15168 of the CEQA guidelines, and preparation of the addendum was deemed appropriate. The project is consistent with the relative key policies and implementation measures of the county general plan, Title 16, the subdivision ordinance, and the Copper Mill Zoning Code. There were no concerns from many agencies, except for Caltrans for the modification, which is not in this request, and no comments were received in objection to the project from any adjacent landowners. The applicant, as I said previously, will bring the modification back after their engineer and Caltrans figure out how to best move forward with the deletion of the mitigation measure requiring the traffic signals. So stay tuned, more on that. All right, and that is my presentation. Let me know if you have any questions about any of this, or if you want me to go back and bring up any of those maps.
Could you go ahead and put the map back up, just so we'll have it for reference?
Which one?
The...
The...
The current A.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Madeline?
I do.
As do I, but go ahead with yours. They might be the same.
First, I think you ought to just, before I get to questions and comments, you ought to sit back and relax and receive some praise. I think this is a great example of what we've come to expect from our planning department. We've got a full and complete report, just as Gina's was in May, that really give us a basis to make up our minds as to whether the statutory and regulatory requirements have been met. And I think we are very lucky to have a planning department that can provide such a report to us. I can't imagine that there's a planning commission in the state or in the country that gets better input than what we've gotten today.
Well, thank you.
And as an example, the addendum to the EIR, I mean, it's more than 60 pages of original work. I doubt it was any, a whole lot of cut and paste in this thing from anywhere else just to satisfy the requirements. And it's, the research and the writing of all this is quite an achievement. I want you to know that we read it.
Thank you.
We don't just accept your conclusion. It's our duty to read it. And of course, when we read it, we might have some suggestions and comments, but they are just meant to work with you to burnish an already outstanding work product.
Thank you, Commissioner Lash. I lean heavily on my two saviors over here, the council and the director. It is definitely a team effort, so.
So with that, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On this map...
Yeah.
I just wanted to nail down the acreage. On the first page of the staff report, we're told it's 2.74 acres. This second page has a typo that says it's 27.4 acres, I think. I mean, even though the 2.74 acres does appear in the upper left-hand portion of this map, the finding, or, excuse me, Condition 1-1 in the resolution uses the acreage figures that are kind of in the midst of these maps, which add up with, let's see, 2.1 acres in A and 1.3 in B, it adds up to 3.4 acres.
Yes.
Which I think is prob, I don't know where the 2.74 acre figure, where that came from.
I think the Copper Mill project was 27.4 total, and I think that got misconstrued here somehow.
Any other...
If I read this.
You're talking about the location on the very front of the staff report here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that's confusing, isn't it?
But, so I think the acreages that are stated in Condition 1-1 are accurate. I mean, there are these figures that we see in this map.
Yes, 2.1 and 1.3, yes, that's correct, yes. Sorry about that.
Just wanted to make sure that you agree.
Is everybody okay with that description in that Condition 1-1? Is that enough to...
I think so.
Okay. Can I ask kind of a related question? It's just a curiosity. I believe the actual boundary of the entire project is an extension of that lower right-hand diagonal straight line. So there's a space below Site B, below the curved boundary and the boundary of the project that looks like at one time it was intended to be a road connecting through. So what's happening with that piece? So it's just... It's providing a...
Where's the mic?
Yeah. Looks like it's going to just provide a buffer to Sawmill Creek.
Yeah, so originally it was going to be a bridge across the covered bridge because they were developing their townhomes over there. That's not necessary for what we're doing, so we'll then drop the copper cove and have a secondary access through one of our other locations.
I was just curious, because I remember it was the topic of discussion in the past.
Exactly, stuff getting a little roundabout there right now.
Sure, thank you. Carry on.
Then, oh, one thing I wanted to mention was that the chart that you provided as far as agencies contacted and the response was very helpful, instead of just setting it forth in the text as to who was asked and what the response was. The, the actual size of, I mean, I realize that the condominiums were originally planned within these two areas, but this is taking up, is not taking up any more space, ground space than the condominiums would have.
So the, this was not set in stone. This was just a visual to kind of give an idea of what, how they wanted to see development occur. But afterwards, with this approval, this sort of laid the ground for where structures would be placed. And it's different, you know, the lines that you can see here, it's similar, but it is different, especially in this southern area that we're looking at. But, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm answering your question.
And we're not using more ground space for these than we would have for the condominiums.
What is limiting them is the amount of square footage that they're allowed to have total.
Okay.
The number of dwelling units and the 233,000 square feet. They can amend the lots through lot line adjustments, they can place structures as needed, as long as they're staying within that development limitation.
And then, this is maybe a question more suitable for the applicant, but the wastewater system, is there, do we have a current status of that? And whether the conditions that we're imposing have anything to do with the completion of the wastewater system? As I understand it, right now, there are tanks that have to, trucks have to take the stuff somewhere else.
Correct. Sounded like they had come up with a solution to that, though.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Mike Fletcher, and one of the managing partners, along with Tom Hicks. And I want to echo the compliments to Madeline and her department, she's been great to work with, and we really appreciate their efforts and their issues. We also really do appreciate that this was put into place back in 2007. So we're looking at 18 years later, basically, that we're going to finally be able to get it started and get it going. So we really do appreciate your review today, so thank you for that. The, when it was built, there was going to be 3,500 more homes. It was Oak Canyon Ranch that was right there. As a result of that, that's why the condition came in for the signalization, because they thought, well, that would be developed by 2025. Well, as we know, that has gone now to permanent open space, and it will never be developed. So Oak Canyon Ranch is gone. And, but the condition says on the traffic, to deal with that first, it says that you shall put in the signal. It didn't say in 2025 that you'd do an updated report or updated study and determine whether or not it's required, it just basically said you shall. So that's why we thought we had that all resolved, because Caltrans will not want a signal there on Highway 4. Public Works has already said they don't want a signal on, there's just not going to be a warrant for it. So on the sewer-related issues, when we acquired it, what they did is they thought Oak Canyon Ranch was going to go quickly, they thought everything was going to happen. So Castle &amp; Cook at that point in time put in a booster station that sends the sewer up to a storage tank, and then we pump it into a truck and we take that sewer down to the treatment plant. So we pay sewer fees and we pay trucking fees of about $20,000 a month. We are very motivated to no longer have to do that. We are part of the requirement here, and one of the conditions of this map, if I'm correct, Madeline, is that it requires us to work with CCWD and have all those issues resolved. And we understand it has to have sewer systems in place in order to continue developing it. There's two parts to that that we're working with CCWD on. One is Castle &amp; Cook put in a booster station, water booster station, a huge tank to serve the area, not only the town square, but to serve residents in the area. In addition, they put a 10-inch water line from that water tank to the project to serve the needs. It only gets about 100 gallons per minute flow, and they want it to be 200 to not only handle our needs, but also the needs within the area. So we have a booster, water booster station project that is 90% complete now in its design. Now, water booster system will take up that existing, put a parking lot in it, build a brand-new building, pumps, do all those kinds of things, which will not only handle our ultimate needs that we have, but it will also meet the needs for the community, too, help with the fire flow and everything else. Originally, we had a bond in place that was required. It was a $250,000 bond. That project is now grown to over $1 million forward. We agreed to fund that, even though the bond's only $250,000. So that will take care of the water system, and as soon as we get that in place, along with the forced main work that's being done along Little John Road, it's actually a four-mile line roughly, that connects the town square all the way down to the treatment plant. And both those projects fall under a new bond issue. We have an old program bond that we're doing, and we had a bid out by contractors. Those plans are about 60% complete now. And we'll be putting that in as soon as we possibly can through the old program, the bond program, which will then is been accepted by CCWD Board, the old program. It's illegal right now, being worked on, and we think within the next six months, we'll be able to put that bond in place, which will then let us not only do the water booster station, but also take that forced main. And what we're trying to do is do it from both sides, both in the surgery and plant and also from the town square, and hopefully that's like a Chinese railroad, it'll connect in the middle and line up correctly. So the sewer system ultimately will be done by that. We recognize that condition, it's a condition of this map, that we continue to work with CCWD to have that in place. We'll most likely be starting construction of the townhomes at the same time that we're putting that sewer line in, so that, because that takes six months to basically do the sewer line, the first town, or townhome will take, you know, a year to basically get the fix. We did not want to do condominiums here, it was wrong, because the original plan was to be huge, big buildings of condominiums. And so as you look at the plan, we broke those into four complexes and two complexes and put lots of landscaping between them, created open view corridors between the buildings so that you can see the open space. It's just a much better plan. And so I don't think we quite understood at the time that it would take this whole new process to change it from Congress to townhomes, but we're happy to be here today to do that. Does that answer the question? Also, I've had a chance to review your comments and changes, the resolution that you had, and we're fine with that, too.
Great. So as I understand, by the time the townhouses are completed, there will be a sewer connection going directly to a treatment plant.
We've already stated, and we have in writing, put to Doug and to Public Works and also to CCWD, that you can limit an occupancy of any buildings until such time as that occurs. Now, we do have building 11 and 12 be ready to get started. It doesn't have any bathrooms or anything in it, so it's not in the sewer treatment plan. So we're trying to get things started here, we're kind of feeling like we made that man just a little bit here, so. Any other questions for me?
I was just curious, are they going to be sold, each townhome sold to new?
Yeah, they'll be sold individually. And to answer the questions beforehand, because of the size and the number of bedrooms and baths, there's no difference to it, it does fall within the 233,000 square feet, and we aren't building less units than what we can under the approval.
So is that going to, they're going to each one have a parcel?
Yeah, it's a legal lot, you're creating a legal lot.
So those will have to be developed as they are sold?
We are pretty knowledgeable. The site is, Castle &amp; Cook came in back in 2007, spent $53 million, and put in all the infrastructure for the whole site. They basically graded this, as you saw in the pictures, and everything's done, and then just been sitting there since really 2008. But what you're creating with the final map, this is the tentative map, as it goes forward and complete the conditions of that, submit the final map. We've already done the improvement plans, the grading plans, all that, what is done. We'll be submitting that, and then that'll be brought forward to record a final map, which will create those lots.
These townhomes are built with double walls, totally separated, so you can actually describe a physical parcel for them.
Yes, it's a physical parcel, it's not like a comm anywhere, you know, you own the paint and everything.
Yeah.
You own that part of the building.
So down the road, every townhome will have its own parcel number?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Now, I understand from the staff report, though, you say all the grading's been done, there will be 17 oak trees that are going to be...
The majority of the grading was done with the original back in 2007, and they put services to every parcel, so they had sewer, water, storm drain, utilities. They spent $53 million to put everything and get it ready. So the onsite stuff will be grading sewer, water, and storm drain improvements on each parcel for the 38 units, and that'll be the intract for those units. And I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question.
Though, I understood that... Well, I understood that in order to develop the townhouses, there will be 17 oak trees cut down of, none of them.
There, my understanding is they're already gone, but the conditions within this map are that there's a three to one replacement ratio to that. We're going to be coming with many more trees than that. So we have a full landscape plan that we've already developed for it. So if there are any trees, which we don't think there are any within the map, then we'll be replacing those. We have to submit a landscape plan as a condition of the map prior to final map. We're all landscaping, we're tree removal and special work as a condition, existing condition of the map now.
But also the mitigation measures involve the...
And it's all within the conditions of this map.
Okay.
Thank you. That's actually going to bring me to my questions, which had to do with what is the status of the monitoring program, given that all of this work has already been completed, all of those mitigations and tree replacement plans should already have been approved by the planning department? And do we have status reports on any of that?
We don't have a status report. What we have are files, you know, documents that were collected in the 2006, 2007 era for the work that was done, for the biological stuff. The, there's the button celery species, there was the work for the wetlands that was done that received Army Corps permits and water war permits. And then the oak tree, there were two oak tree reports, there was the inventory plan and then there was the replacement plan before the trees were removed. That work was all done. The trees, I don't have the other, the page two to the map that shows, it's sort of the grading, proposed grading plan. There are, I believe, a couple of smaller oaks to the, sort of the southern, southwestern portion of Site A that might need to take out a couple more trees, but those are all within the footprint that was already analyzed. The mitigation, the contribution to the conservation fund was already paid for the mitigation of the oaks, like the work has already been done, so this is already included in that.
So, but, so already there is a requirement for regular reporting on this and monitoring. And whose responsibility is that? And whose responsibility will it be going forward? My, my concern is we've had a couple of decades here of time when no progress seems to have been being made on those mitigations. I'm not blaming the developer or anything. I understand, you know, things start and stop. I'm just looking for, how are we going to manage and monitor things going forward?
Well, that would be me.
Lucky Madeline.
Can I supplement your question?
Sure.
The bio mitigation measure, BIO-3A, set forth a seven-year period for reports on the replacement and conservation plan. And that's why that seven-year period is, is long gone.
Correct.
That's why in my suggestion, changes the resolution, that we revive that reporting period.
Yes.
My understanding is that the previous report of timeframes have expired now, because it's been so long for the project. The condition for monitoring is a condition of this map. So as we move forward and do the improvements to this property, that seven-year clock will start as a mitigation measure for this end of the map. So we'll be doing that. If we do have any impacts that require that, that mitigation will be work that we have to complete as part of our requirement with the planning department.
Yeah, I just didn't read the mitigation measure as, as having a revival provision.
Yeah, but when I looked at it and went through it carefully, it was clearly four wounds happening at that time.
Oh, sure.
But any subsequent maps, in my mind, if there's mitigation work and monitoring is required, there might not be any. But if there is any, we would have to put that into place.
But as, as you said, if you don't have an objection to what I suggested for the resolution, we're fine.
I think the concern is, we want to see the trees that were already removed, replaced in compliance with the original requirements. That, that's, and I'm not sure that landscaping is actually a mitigation in this case unless it's replacing the native species that were lost.
Well, it's based on the size and circumference of the tree, number one. But there's been a huge amount of trees that have been added to the town square that are already placed in existing, that they did. I can't tell you today that they mitigated perfectly for what was taken out at that time. But ultimately, anything that's done with this site here will be mitigated correctly forward.
But, but the trees are already gone. You won't be taking out any additional trees, so.
And I wasn't here during that time.
Yeah.
But when those trees were taken out, there's quite a few oak trees and other kinds of landscaping that were done, assuming, assuming back in that day that the mitigation work was done, because they've got final occupancies and they've got final everything else with the buildings themselves. I don't know.
Yep, so, yeah. I don't think we're going to hold you responsible for what was or wasn't enforced in the distant past. I think we're just trying to look forward to, to what can we do to, so that the county can do better at our side of it.
I'd be telling you that when we get done, there'll be more oak trees on that site than was, probably that the mitigation would have handled and some further.
And given the challenges of actually replacing landscaping with all the 4290 and 4291 fire safety concerns, so it's a challenge. We understand.
Thank you.
And Madeline, I understood from the staff report that there were 17 oak trees that will be removed now for this.
Me, too.
Okay.
And I was going to ask just somebody to point to them where they were, because I couldn't see them on the photos.
No, because they're closer, they're more to the south, further closer to the creek. So they're not on the...
Well, when you look at your aerial photos, that's what I was really looking at. Like, oh, there's, there's not a lot to...
These are here.
Yeah. But they're saying that they've already been removed anyway, so.
Or they're outside the building.
Yeah, exactly. That was what I assumed, is they were outside the boundaries that I was trying to line up.
But, just to confirm, that there were, there will be 17 oak trees that are there now that will be removed for this project?
That was my understanding, based on the grading plan that was submitted.
Okay.
Might be an artifact of earlier descriptions.
I don't see why there's, I don't think any of them are.
This doesn't show the current boundary lines. Those are the old ones.
Yeah.
And certainly anytime we get a grading permit, you know, we're building.
We'll assume that there are and we'll take care of it.
Yes, exactly.
Oh, it might have to slope it.
Yeah.
Because you're dropping down in that creek, so it might have to slope it down that way. That's, that's completely hairless, whether you're taking trees out for the construction or you're taking trees out because the sloping requires.
Yeah, typically, we don't think there's any trees that are going to be impacted currently. If we get out there and see that, depending on the tree, because we don't want to take down any oak trees. We can't replace them and it helps to sell the houses and experience that people have. So we're going to do everything we can to protect that. So we don't just go in and chop that tree, so we're able to put in all the canyon wall and slope condition, if we're able to do, you know, some slope grading to foster that. But that's something that you kind of do in the field when you're out there.
You might be able to avoid the trees while you're still getting the sloping.
That would be a goal, because for anybody buying a home here, those oak trees are precious. And we don't want to lose anything. So we'll do everything in our power that's feasible to be able to protect that.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sure you have something else on your list.
Well, while we get to the resolution, I have my suggestions.
So is that it for questions regarding that? Okay. So are we all ready to take a look at the resolution? Does anybody else have any questions for either the applicant or?
Do we public comment?
I don't. I'm just asking if there's any questions from us yet. Is there anybody online, Annette? So is there anybody not associated with the project who'd like to stand up and give some public comment? Except they're not going to let you. So, so we are opening and closing the public comment portion and bringing it back to the commission for further discussion. I think we all have the list of possible, Tim's recommended resolution items. And then I had a question that had to do with then, is it necessary for us to explicitly speak to consistency with 4290 and 4291 in the resolution?
Which we do have.
We have to.
We have to. The question is whether what's in there is sufficient. And that, that's, to me, it looks as if with the, with the, a combination of the finding and the statement of the evidence, it seems to cover the area pretty well. But I certainly would defer to legal counsel if legal counsel thinks something more is needed.
I didn't know there would be a question about this in advance, so I didn't have to sit here and do an analysis against all of the, the requirements. But, I mean, nothing stood out to me when I got this.
It mentions it with respect to the roads, which, which is the primary, and...
Well, I have to apologize. I didn't reread your comments that you prepared more than a month ago until this morning.
Neither did I.
To realize, yeah, to realize.
Neither did I.
It does also talk about defensible space as well. So I think, I think it is, I think it covers both aspects.
I mean, I will say that CAL FIRE is the enforcing agency for 4290 and they did not have any comments, which I see is, I'd like to presume that if they had a concern, they
Yeah, I think the other piece of that is covered by the Coppropolis Fire Department's comments.
Mm-hmm. Also from Julie's memo from before, there was a question about the, some of the responsibilities for grading and stormwater permitting that's been transferred from Public Works to Building. And we still have it as, in the resolution, as the requirements, conditions required by Public Works. Is that something we, should we be changing? I mean, building itself did not submit any conditions to it.
This transfer is still ongoing. I mean, the, the new applications that are coming in for grading permits are being processed by the building department, but not all permits that are in process have been transferred over.
Okay.
But you're correct. It's just that since this is such a new transfer, we didn't get conditions in here changed. The conditions will still apply because there are the regulations and the requirements and code. But it will be the building department that is implementing them.
But that'll be work up between planning, excuse me, Public Works and Building.
And it's only really when you're pulling a building permit. It's not when you're doing a subdivision map. Building department's not reviewing, grading, except when it's associated with an actual construction project.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you're, you're satisfied that the conditions as stated are...
I, I'm perfectly comfortable with it. It's really, in my mind, a procedural issue at this point. We're kind of in that transition zone. And so the building department will more than likely pick up these Public Works conditions and functionally will, functionally will implement them.
If you're asking if there's a, if there would be a legal cause of action, sorry, we're not going to do anything, because you said building instead of Public Works. I really don't think there's anything there.
Okay. Great.
They're implementing the same requirements. Okay, so I'm confused right off the bat with insert TSTM at the end of the title.
Okay, that's...
Because it already says tentative subdivision map at the title.
Yeah, it's just that later on, it just refers to TSTM. And I wanted to establish, when we first stated...
It could be in the first whereas, maybe rather than in the title.
Is that okay?
That, that would be fine. Less awkward, for sure. Then my, my second suggestion, therefore, resolve. As stated, why we're approving the project and the addendum, but the project and the addendum also presented the question of the deletion of the mitigation measure. And just to make perfectly clear that we're not approving the elimination, uh, elimination of the traffic light requirements, that's why I suggest the insert to the extent they consider the TSTM.
I'm good with that, yeah.
That's, that's good.
And the, number three, there shouldn't be a problem.
So what you wanted to say, and the addendum to the EIR TSTM, is that?
No.
No.
And the addendum to the EIR, to the extent they consider the TSTM, and then based on the following findings.
So in other words, EIR common, to the extent they consider the TSTM comma, based upon the following.
Just to really specify that the, that you're focusing on the TSTM.
Yeah, yeah. And then since the verb in, in the last sentence on page two is a plural verb and we're talking about no new information, right, should be a singular. Then my number four on page six, this is to fill in, to make sure that the reporting requirements that were required during the first seven years of the project, of the initial project, are indeed reinstated for this subdivision map act change. So in case I've confused everybody, BIO-3A set up the reported, this replacement and conservation plan, and I'm really looking to the oak trees here, and set up a seven-year reporting requirement. This is just to rejuvenate that reporting requirement for the period of this, of this Any problems with that?
So that's, that's spelled out in mitigation measure, BIO-3A, to provide annual performance reports already. So we're okay with that?
Absolutely. I mean, it's just adding specificity.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
So are we reviving it for seven years? Are we reviving it for the length of time to build out the entire development? Or can we even do that, given we're only looking at this one tentative map?
And my suggestion is until this project is completed.
This particular project? I'm fine with that.
Number five of mine, page seven, this condition 3-8 does say that the applicant will be required to meet the provisions of all applicable county codes in effect at the time. But then it goes to specify certain codes and what our ordinances usually do... And what our ordinances usually do is say, is, is to do what I'm suggesting. So we say these include comma, but are not limited to those specific ordinance.
Good catch.
Oh, yeah, now, my number six, maybe I'm misunderstanding some of this. Let's see. Three dash nine, okay. Condition three dash seven says the applicant proposes to provide alternate walking paths instead of sidewalks along the road. And then says this walking path shall be designed, so this is, that's the part that really is the condition. But then when we get down to three point nine, toward the end, it says, see county code section so-and-so for sidewalk requirements, et cetera. And as stated, these seem to be, to me, appear to be inconsistent. That we're requiring sidewalks, but on three dash seven, we're saying alternate walking paths instead of sidewalks. And so that's why I'm suggesting that we, uh, say subject to condition three dash seven above. When we get down to three point, three dash nine and the sidewalk requirement. Am I, am I not seeing something?
No, I think that that works, we're tying it into the above because you're right, there could be a perceived disconnect there.
Okay. Oh, and again, now that this, I really think I might be whoops, wait a minute. I, I say, on my number seven, I, I refer to condition three dash five. I really meant to say three dash fifteen page nine. We, under three dash fifteen E, we talk about verifying that downstream drainage pertinences can handle the flows. And then we say all incremental increases in peak flows from the developer must be detained on site. And I didn't know if there was some inconsistency there between talking about downstream and containing everything on site. No, no problem?
No problem.
Yeah, I don't think there's too much inconsistency.
That's all I need to know. Okay. Oh, and then, uh, six dash three. It's, in, in the resolution, it's saying the applicant is aware that it must complete construction of these improvements. And, uh, I'm just changing it to be more of a condition. But again, I'm not sure what I've written in here is appropriate. The applicant must complete construction of these improvements in order to serve the copper mill project, including the townhouses approved here in. This is, again, the, uh, the water and wastewater utilities. As I understand it, you have any, no problem with that. That would be great. Yeah, yeah, you clarified that earlier, so. And then usually we have a list of exhibits. Just raising the question of whether we want a list of exhibits here or just let it be. There's no requirement.
It's definitely staff's preference to have them just as the record as a whole when we get into other appeals or other issues. That's why we designed the staff report this way for the resolution to be really kind of a standalone. And then you have different exhibits that are part of the package that you have reviewed.
What I'm talking about is whether the resolution ought to say the exhibits attached to this resolution are...
I thought the decision last time we had this come up was not to, that the entire packet is incorporated.
Anyhow, that, that was just...
Leave that up to the commission.
Anyhow, that's...
I, I think we just need to settle on a, whatever the, our policy is going to be and not, then we would need to discuss it each time.
Right, yeah, if the commission has a preference. We, we, we run into some issues with
Going to board.
Going to the board, the board review, and how things need to be loaded up for the board to look at it. And we run into issues with formatting, PDFing things, attaching things, size of files, every, every, all sorts of logistical issues. For the planning commission as itself, it's really not an issue. It's when we go to the next step or have to go to the next step.
Yeah, the only reason I was raising that was just that we have two exhibits, two, as I understand it, to the resolution.
Yes.
The tentative subdivision tract map and then the mitigation.
We, we could certainly list those as attachments.
Well, I could certainly call out, you know, refer to them.
Yeah, that's a long suggestion.
The map I can refer to in the evidence of whichever section I'm...
Well, I, I don't mean for you to have a paragraph in here. What I'm saying is
No, 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 but it just...
Attached to the following exhibits, A, so-and-so, B, such and such.
I think that's fine for, for the, for the two items, yeah.
It's when you get the entire package, sometimes it's hard to tell which exhibits go with what.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Okay. Are we ready to hear the recommendation? Yep, good.
We are.
Nothing else? So staff recommends the planning commission adopt planning commission resolution 2025 dash zero one zero, approving, as amended, approving the addendum to the EIR and approving tentative subdivision tract map 2023 dash zero zero eight. Did I get it wrong? Pardon me. Staff recommends planning commission adopt planning commission resolution 2025 dash zero zero nine, as amended, approving the addendum to the EIR and approving tentative subdivision tract map 2023 dash zero zero eight. Did I get that provision right? Zero zero eight and zero zero nine.
Whatever it was, I still move. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So passes five zero 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 zero.
And the decision is final. Appeal to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And are there any commissioner reports? Not for me. Planning director report?
Uh, just to, some minor updates. We are going to be moving forward with the short-term rental ordinance, the oak preservation ordinance, and also a special events code change. So stay tuned with that.
Hopefully not all on the same day.
No, not on, not on the same time. But those will start to fall here pretty quickly because we've gotten that input from several other committees and the public. And so we feel like we have final direction on those items. And so we will be moving forward on those.
And are you guys working on the open space plan that apparently we need to update?
As well, but that, that'll fall behind the, the three that I just stated. But that's basically phase two.
Okay, great. We're adjourned at exactly 10 o'clock. Good job, everybody.
No delays.
No delays. I was going to say, but you didn't pull over, right? I was thinking, uh-oh.